This conference will now be recorded.
The preliminary annual budget here that you guys should all be able to see, and I believe that was along with the minutes as well, and we'll just kind of go along. So a couple of notes to start out with, we pretty much just started with the current year budget as a baseline and made some adjustments as necessary. And this is far from our final version. We definitely have a few updates to go through, but feel free to, you know, ask any questions, give any input as we move along. So let's start out with the revenue. So this is just the general fund revenue. This doesn't include all the other funds, but this is the bulk of where we get our money. So property taxes, the setting the property tax levy rate is a whole process that I don't have a full handle on yet. But before Paul had kind of left us, he had given us some, sorry, not the accountant, Paul, but Paul Lewis, he'd given us some future projections of what we thought the property taxes were going to be. So we just dropped his as a placeholder in there for now. Utility excise taxes, those are going to go up a little bit based on having a full year's worth of waste in recycling, but other than that, it's staying pretty flat. The retail sales and use taxes, this one has gone through a couple of changes already. So as you can see through 2021, we're already at 637,000 and we had budgeted 456 for the year. So a whole lot of this is construction related though, you know? So if they're spending millions of dollars on building whatever they're building, we still get some, a sales tax portion of that. So while we don't necessarily think that things are going to stay as high moving forward, but we're still going to be seeing some elevated sales. At least that's what we're expecting for next year. Criminal justice, pretty flat. That's a small one. I'm not actually sure who we get pull tabs from, if that's even still a thing, but we left that $2,000 on there. The card rooms, we've been seeing about 120,000 a month. Dennis, do you have a hand up?
Question. Yeah, just want to get too far along there. Of the, regarding back to the retail sales taxes and use taxes, can you tell us Riley, of that 337, how much that of that came out of the middle school, the building of the middle school versus new construction homes? Are you able to break that out at all?
I think we can get that. I do not have those figures in front of me though.
I would like to see what that number, because I would, I would think that's a fairly substantial amount of that 637.
Yeah, that definitely was a big portion of it.
Thank you.
We can see the portion that came from building, but we do not know exactly how much came from the middle school. So I can send you the top revenue producers for this past year, but we do not know specific to the middle school.
Hey Maria, this is Randy. On that list we saw yesterday, wasn't Robinson the contractor for the middle school?
They were, but then you also have other contractors that did stuff for the middle school as well. You know, you had the flooring and the lumber, and so we don't know what portion of those.
They weren't rolled up, because that Robinson, I think, was the number one anyway.
It was. Yes, Dennis, another follow up?
Oh.
Okay.
But yeah, are we done collecting the, the sale tax and such from the middle school now? Is that completed?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think it is because they're still finalizing construction and we, they finalize and we do run about a month in arrears as far as collection. And then now they're out, you know, finishing up outfitting the building, but hopefully in the next month, we should see the last of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
But you know, we've seen some months that are almost at 100 grand in sales tax in one month, but yeah, that's not necessarily going to be staying the same moving forward. So we were just at card rooms. They'd been seeing 120 on average over the last few months and we're kind of hoping that that is going to stay fairly consistent. You know, we haven't really seen much that's saying that that is going to either go up or down, but that seems to be a fairly, you know, I think that was not too far off of what it was in the pre pandemic levels, post Kalanay, but pre pandemic, it's, I think that was around 1.7. So we're still a little lower than that, but things have been fairly consistent. So the licenses and permits, this one is, we just stuck in last years for now. We don't have our full construction numbers yet of what we're expecting, because a lot of the construction related revenue, it will affect a few different things. We actually did get some numbers this afternoon, but not early enough to get that in here. But so the biggest portion of that is, you know, some of our planning fees and so on and so forth. The intergovernmental revenues, the big one in here, so you can see that we're at 700 over the 180 budgeted this year. That was a large portion of that was, we got 475 in the American Recovery Program this year, and we're expecting another 475 for that next year. In addition to that, there's the state shared revenues, like the motor vehicle fuel tax and a couple of other things. And the state just gives us numbers for that, which is nice and easy for budgeting purposes. So that's going to be about 145. And the rest a little bit is between QD privilege tax and city assistance.
There is stipulations to that money though, that was given to us, right? Isn't that what I read?
Yeah, Mary, yes. And we don't know exactly how we're going to spend that yet. We've had a number of discussions about it. There certainly are some restrictions about what you can do with it, but I think it's about a three year time period. We have to figure it out and spend it. So we're going to continue those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So the charges for services, so that one, we just kind of just stuck the same as this year as well. There's a few of those building related things in there that we're kind of waiting for some updated numbers on. Mended fines and forfeitures miscellaneous, those are kind of small anyways. Transfers in, that's another amount coming from the sewer fund, to pay these outstanding loans, the interfund loans that have been going on for a while. As of now, we're just going to stick at the same levels. You know, we can always have that discussion if we want to try paying that back faster or slower, but I think that's a pretty good, a pretty good number for now. And so another thing that's not necessarily represented in this budget, but you'll see the little note at the bottom, is that we are expecting to be able to lease out what is the current city hall building as well as the bottom floor of the new city hall building next year. So we're working on trying to get some estimates for how much we might actually see from that, as well as some small expenses for, you know, some minor improvements or for some administrative things. But we don't have those numbers yet, but, and it probably won't be a full year of income. I doubt we'd get them in that quickly, but that is another upcoming revenue stream. Any questions, comments on the revenue before we move forward? Alrighty. So the next number of slides are all in the general fund as well, but we're just going to kind of go department by department. That's how these are largely broken down. So you'll see quite a, not necessarily in this one right here, but overall, there's going to be some fluctuations in the benefits to salary ratios. We kind of found that these weren't really consistent in the past and not necessarily that accurate. So what I did is I kind of looked at the last couple of years and figured out an actual average of what we're really paying, and it came out to about 38%. So we tried to do a flat 38% of benefits to salary ratio across the board. The one exception being the legislative department, because since they're not exactly full employees, the benefits are a little different on that one. But otherwise, staying fairly consistent. Supplies, dropping that a little bit, because we have found a ton of office supplies as Desi's been cleaning this place out. And then the services, that is where a lot of our consultant fees go. I know that's a bit of a contentious subject and they're not necessarily all in here. Some of them get kind of allocated across various departments. But you know, we've got the human resources, city attorneys, some other attorneys, IT services, and we're going to have our two year audit next year. And I just found out we have to pay to get audited. So we've got some money appropriated for that in there as well. And then of course, the AWC risk liability insurance, that's a big one that comes out in January. I don't think we've gotten numbers from the AWC on that yet, so we just don't know what the exact percentage we went with, but we just assumed a flat percentage of increase across the board. Moving along, the legislative.
I gotta tell you, I'm happy to hear that we found a bunch of supplies. That definitely helps, because I think a couple of years ago, we, we were budgeting some money or had to do some amendments for some supplies as well. So that's good to hear.
Yep. Legislative department, you'll see a decline in the budgeted salary. That does not mean we're actually going to be paying you council members less. That is just that what we had in the budget this year was a little bit higher than the statutory maximums. So you know, everybody gets a flat amount a month plus a fixed amount per meeting they attend with a cap on the number of meetings. So if everybody hits their meeting cap, it's going to be 27 to 100, and I can't see it going past that without the council passing something else. And then the benefits are a lot lower because we don't actually have to pay payroll taxes on them. I believe it's just L and I. So the services, there's not a whole lot in there and the kind of really the only one that increased materially would be the advertising one, because I think we've got quite a few open positions payroll wise. So we're going to have to pay to get some folks in there. And then that culture recreation, that's kind of those concerts at the park, pretty small amount, shouldn't fluctuate much. Police department, everybody's favorite one to talk about. So this will be an interesting one. As you all know, we don't have a fully staffed police department at this time. We are, you know, we're going to appropriate enough to have a fully operational and a fully staffed police department. I don't see us getting a full staff by January 1, so it's entirely possible we're not going to hit that full salary amount. But as of now, the expectation is just to keep along with the status quo. So that's what we've got budgeted in there. Plus, I think there was a 5% increase for Colas. And then we adjusted the benefits to be at that same flat percentage. So you'll see the supplies line went up quite a bit, and I've got kind of a little breakdown here. We had thought the body cameras were going to be a lot more, but it was, it's actually over a five year period, which is nice, and it's only about 17.5 in the first year. That being said, if we do want to hire a number of officers, there's quite a few of these expenses that will have to go on a per officer basis. These things like background checks, accountee fee, equipment come into the tune of about 22 grand apiece. And one thing that we did discuss yesterday that we should note is, you know, we're not exactly sure how we would potentially be getting these officers, whether they're coming straight from the academy or whether they're a, just like a lateral hire. And from, I think it's Ridgefield is doing $20,000 signing bonuses for the lateral hires, and they still can't get anybody. So, but we have to assume that, you know, if we don't do this, people straight out of the background, they wouldn't have these, the academy training fee and whatnot, but we'd still have to pay a fairly hefty signing fee to get them to come out here. So I feel like either way that goes, the cost is going to be kind of the same. It's just a function of whether it goes, you know, which of these items it ends up on. And then, let's see here, services and intergov, those are staying about the same, not a whole lot of other change in there. I got to imagine I've got some questions on this one, if anybody has any?
I think that's pretty straightforward. The body cameras, does that include like the data storage and all that stuff or, and your numbers there also include a clerk, correct or no?
Yeah, so I believe there was a, we put 50,000 additional into the, nope, that math doesn't check out. We put, we put some in the salary, assuming that we're going to have to pay somebody to review the body camera stuff as well. That's kind of included in that expense.
A question. Riley, when Chief Richardson shared with us here a month ago or so, regarding all the bills that came out of the latest legislature, I think there were like 10 or 11 bills that were related to law enforcement of some level. My question, I guess, is what I've heard and read, and you read the paper, if you're talking to sheriff and other comments have been out there, that the amount of money that's associated with those 10 or 11 different bills that were passed, has all of that been factored into our number? Because based on what I've, what I've read and understand, which is not a whole lot, but that that number seems to be much lower than I would have thought it would be based on those requirements that are being forced upon the sheriff and, and various police departments without, throughout the state.
We do have the chief on here, and he was the one that helped compile this budget. So Chief, can you chime in and discuss about the additional costs that those bills would have on the budget?
Let me, yes, let me go back. Let's talk about body cams really quick, because there was a question. It's about $50,000 over five years. That doesn't include sales tax, and it doesn't include any data storage greater than 1,500 gigabytes. And we won't know what our data storage is until obviously we start getting some usage, because it's not only dependent on, you know, how many officers you have out there, but also what your policy is on when you turn your body cam on or off. So that's one thing we have to remember. So there's, there's some additional costs there that we don't know what those are yet. Now, the other thing to remember too, is these are just individual body cameras on the police officers, both Vancouver and CCSO, and their body cam proposals are requiring a body cam on the officer and a dash cam in the vehicle, which can be from the same company, but you've got to remember that once you put, once you, once you double the amount of body cameras, not only do your costs go up, it's really the hardware costs don't go up that much. It's the, really the data, because now you're, now you're collecting data from two different sources, one of which is activated when the officer gets out of his car, but the actual vehicle camera, a lot of times by policy, that thing is on all the time. And it's buffering until you either turn on your, you turn on your red lights and your siren, and then it goes from the buffering to recording. So that's, that's something to remember. The other thing we need to remember is with the Public Records Act and the ability to get this, these, this video, that not only do we have public records requests, but you also have to give this video to the prosecutors or prosecuting cases, because they're going to want to review the cases before they file a case. And all of, all of the, most of the data that I've read, I just read another report today, it's about 10 minutes of redaction time for every one minute of video. And the redaction can, can either be the video, or sometimes it has to be the video and the audio, depending on what the circumstances are of the scene that's being recorded. So you really need at least a part-time body to do all the redactions, but it may be a full-time body. I believe the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office for their, the Clark County Sheriff's program, I believe they, they're asking for, I wanted to say between 14 and 16 clerks. Now that's countywide, because you've got to have clerks to redact in the sheriff's department, the prosecutor's office, and also the public defender's office. So there's a lot of moving parts. Finally.
Chief, on that, on that part of what you're just talking about there, being an IT guy and the city not having an IT person, couldn't that double down as somebody that's going through to do the video and such, and then maybe save some money in that aspect? By bringing a IT person on, onboard?
Well, yeah, you could, certainly you could. I mean, it's, we could be, it could be whatever you want, you know, as far as the position, what kind of position is doing the work. It's, it's not, it's not difficult work, but it is, because the software is pretty intuitive, but at the end of the day, a human being has to go back through the video and make sure that the software has correctly redacted things, because you put something out and you violated Public Records Act, or you violated somebody's privacy, obviously we can have an issue there. So, so I hope that answers your question. Now, the other question, people say, well, why body cams are mandated by law? And the answer is no, they're not mandated by law, but starting January 1st, if we stop an adult, interview an adult for a felony or a juvenile for every, any crime, if it's out in the field, it needs to be audio recorded. If it's in the station, it has to be audio and video recorded, and we don't have that capability now. So that, a body cam is the best way to meet that legislation, because it's got a dual purpose. So is everybody on board? Any, any more questions?
I have a quick question. So it's, body cams are not required, but that would be the logical choice for us. But I wasn't clear on the dash cam. Is that, it sounds like that is a part, that is a decision that law enforcement agencies get to make on their own?
That's, that is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it's ultimately, they serve a purpose. It's mostly a risk management purpose, but a body, body cam has got a very narrow focus. You know, it's like about 120 degrees or something like that. So you, when you see something happening on, and you've seen it on TV, we all have our YouTube videos, you'll see two videos. One is the body cam video, it's, a lot of times you don't see very much because of the view. And then the other one is the police dash cam that's showing the overall scene. So it's, the only, the rea, the best reason to do it obviously is to protect the city from liability, but also to collect evidence in case, in case there's either misconduct by the officer, or we have an officer that's injured, and we want to, we want to have the vehicle license plate, those kinds of things. So yes, and body cam would be the best way to go. Obviously, the easiest, cheapest way is a digital recorder, but that's kind of not going to serve a purpose. And it ultimately what would happen is we would find out that we'd not only have a digital recorder, but we'd have to buy a body cam behind it. Because, you know, again, inside the station, you have to have video recording.
We're going to have to have it one way or the other. But it sounds like we can make a choice regarding the dash cams, and I would imagine the, the backend of managing that, that wider field of view and having just one more set of inputs that we need to have off people redact would drive up the cost a lot.
Correct.
I had one, sorry, go ahead. I had one other question, you know, talking about Ridgefield having to offer a $20,000 sign-on bonus.
Correct.
To encourage employment. Does this budget reflect, say, a $20,000 sign-on bonus? Is that in the? I'm looking, you know, the each new officer will incur the following expenses. Is a potential signing bonus reflected?
Yes, Justin, that is included in the services line. So, or was it supplies line? It's, it's going to be either the paying for the new officer or the sign-on bonus. So, and I think that we were estimating we would approximately get five, would be what we could probably acquire in a year.
And the other, other thing to remember, if you do a sign-on bonus, you're generally giving a lateral police officer, and they only have to go through an 80 hour equivalency academy, up at the academy. So you're actually just taking some of that training money, because if they go to the full academy, we have to pay for it. So you're just taking money out of one pot and putting it in another. But that's the best thing to do, because not only do you get that, that police officer to a quicker academy, the equivalency academy, but they're out in the street a lot quicker.
I do want to move on, because we have about 35 minutes to get through the rest of the budget. Thank you for your questions, though.
Yeah, no, thank you. And again, counsel, remember, this is a preliminary budget. The police budget right now is very preliminary. And to Dennis's point, yes, Dennis, I anticipate that this is going to change as we get more information. So just a reminder that this is preliminary, and it will be updated here in the next month or so. Thank you.
And one last note on the police department is also in the budget for next year is a new vehicle purchase, but that will be coming out of the vehicle and equipment fund and not this police department fund. General government, not a whole lot in this one. Really, the only thing that changed drastically is the municipal court costs. And we get an estimate straight from the city of battlegrounds on that one. And anytime we get an estimate from an outside source, that is the easiest way to budget. So I like that. Community development and, okay, I sound a little bit sure if we call it community development or the planning department, one way or the other. So you'll see there's some pretty drastic changes between this year's budget and last year's budget, but the final amount is largely the same. And I think one of the big reasons of that is moving, what's his name here? We are moving Jeff Swanson out of the salary line and down into the services line. So that is why there's a kind of a big jump between those two. But other than that, things are staying fairly consistent. And this is the other place where a lot of our consultants show up, is in that, in that services line item. So we've got WSP, Jeff Swanson, liability insurance. And we also are going to be adding not a full year of an employee, but employee for part of the year to kind of train behind the building inspector, since we are expecting a retirement next year.
Riley, can we, sometime here, I know this is preliminary, get a breakdown of that services line expenditure there in the community development planning department, please?
Definitely. Let me make a note here. Alrighty, any other questions, comments on this one? Alrighty. Public works, so, let's see, so we got an extra full-time employee that we are adding to this, so that's why that salaries is going up quite a bit. Other than that, we're staying fairly consistent with what we had budgeted this year. One of the things that kind of came up yesterday as we were discussing this and don't have things fully fleshed out, but you'll see this transfer is out for 50,000. So the public works department is going to be purchasing a vehicle as well. And so we have this separate vehicle to equipment fund where these are purchased out of, but that, the vehicle and equipment fund needs to be funded. And so, you know, I'm not sure if we're going to be also transferring some from the police department, or how those transfers are going to go. But for the meantime, we just kind of have a placeholder here of about 50 grand, which is a little less than to vehicle that they're going to purchase, but just to kind of make sure that we don't completely deplete that vehicle and equipment fund. And then the parks operations, that's fairly consistent as well. So that kind of wraps up the general fund. All those departments are wrapped up in the general fund. So then we've got the other funds outside of that. So last call, any questions or comments on the general fund? Alrighty then. So the reserve fund, this is one that we like to not tap into at all, and I don't think we will next year either. So we didn't have anything on the budget on there this year. However, they are earning some interest on interest and dividends on the balances they have in there. So we're expecting to see a little bit less interest and dividends next year, because some of our bonds have matured. And we were looking at getting, you know, putting that money back in as new bonds, and they are some pretty abysmal interest rates right now. So we just kind of didn't really see worth it. So we should be seeing some lower interest rates next year, and then there's just some minor bank fees in there as well. Impact fees, this is largely construction related. So I wouldn't necessarily believe any of the numbers in this fund at this time. We're still kind of working on all those construction numbers and all the capital projects and things like that. So I would expect these to change. We just kind of put in the same thing that we had last year. And in fact, that capital one, the capital expenditures down here is still left blank. The capital projects is the next big section that we need to tackle. So that's why it's looking like they're going to be way over as far as revenue over expenses next year, but this just hasn't really been fleshed out that well. But you know, impact fees are, there's park impact fees, traffic impact fees, and school impact fees.
We're not seeing that sheet here. I don't think Riley, you're looking at.
You not seeing it?
No, are we? I don't see.
Can you see this, I'm sharing?
I don't see impact fees on there. Am I missing it?
It's page 11.
Yeah.
The whole thing is that.
Yes, this is the impact fees fund, so charges for goods and services. Everything other than the school impact fees falls into that. And the school impact fees are considered non-revenues and non-expenditures, because it's pretty much just a straight pass through. We get money in and we send it straight to the, to the school. Because it's pretty much just a straight pass through. We get money in and we send it straight to the, to the school.
I apologize. I was looking for a line item, but I understand now. Okay.
Capital projects, similar to my statements on the prior fund. This one, I guess the revenue side, you know, that isn't necessarily as construction dependent, but all of the projects we're working on next year. That's something we really need to get all figured out. For the revenue side of this, though. So the taxes of 500, that is the real estate excise tax. And we are expecting to see those at some pretty, you know, had a lot of higher levels than we have in the past. So, you know, we're, we're at 424 now. So we'll probably be over 500 for the year, but not necessarily going to be at the same levels for next year. But still, still quite a bit of money coming in there. And this 900 in intergovernmental, those are, we pulled that up real quick to give you a breakdown of what those are. Those are ones that I'm pretty dang sure we will be getting. You know, we don't necessarily know all the different grants and things we will be getting next year. But those three are, let's see where do I have this? Apologize, I should have had this up beforehand.
I believe it's the community center.
Yes. So here we go. So it is a Pacific Highway State routes path 200,000. The community center grant is 500,000 and an additional 200,000 for Breezy Creek. And I believe that miscellaneous is, I think that was budgeted, and it probably can't be all interest. That seems a little high for that balance, but there might be a couple other small things in there. But as you'll see, the budgeted expenditures this year was about 4 million. And we haven't spent all of that yet. So some of these projects are going to be rolled over. Dennis?
Yes. Back to your taxes. How are we doubling the taxes from 250 to 500,000? How's that? How are we doubling that?
So we've seen 424 come in already this year out of our expected 250. And so that is just because there has been a whole lot of real estate transactions. So, you know, that 250 that we had on the budget this year, that is just way too low. You know, we're going to be getting way over 500 this year. So I think that that 500,000 number, obviously, it's a pretty round number. It's a, you know, it's, it's an estimate. But that is based on, we're going to be over 500 this year. We'll probably see a little bit less next year.
That's based on the building over there at
It's real estate excise tax, Dennis. So every home that sells in the center, the city gets a percentage on the real estate excise tax. It's restricted money. It has to go into the capital projects fund. So it's strictly real estate excise tax.
So Riverside Estates has been the big, a big, and that continues, that'll, that'll continue on this year and into next year. I see that.
It's not just new construction, Dennis. It's all new, it's all home sales, new home sales, existing home sales. Yeah.
Got you. Thank you. Yep.
Real estate market. And those are time revenue streams. With the restricted to the capital projects.
Thank you.
Alright. So next we got the vehicle and equipment fund. So we're kind of rolling forward that 82,000 that was in the budget this year. That 2021 budget was for a new police vehicle. And the revenue portion of that was our selling, one of the ones we have to getting a new one. We're not expecting that to happen this year. So we're just kind of moving that on into next year. And then there's also going to be a vehicle purchased for the public works department as well. Sewer operations. Alrighty. So we're, there's not going to be any rate changes next year. And I think we're pretty well close to our, what we had budgeted this year as far as just like our standards, you know, our sewer charges. So we left that one the same. You know, there has been a little bit of a population increase, but I don't think it's been drastic enough to materially change those numbers. And then that miscellaneous portion of the revenue, that's just interest and dividends. Down to the operating, I don't believe there were a whole lot of changes in that. Let me pull this up really quick. But I think for the most part, we're just kind of sticking with how things have been going. There's not too much is going to be changing. So the capital projects is again, there will be some capital projects done out of the sewer fund, but we don't have a good list for that yet. And then these transfers out, 400,000, that is going to the general fund as I had previously mentioned, paying off some of these intercompany loans. And then 100,000 goes into the debt service fund because there's some other loans still outstanding that are not interfund loans for the for the sewer. And so that will bring us to the sewer capital fund. And so I think that 125 is just one of the projects I knew was going to be in there, but I don't have that note in front of me as to what that project is. But we will get a good capital project list coming up here, hopefully before the next iteration of this comes out. But so the sewer capital fund is pretty much just the, the big improvements and the big purchases and whatnot from the sewer fund. And they'll be getting 100,000 in from the sewer operations. Sewer debt service, the revenue portion of this is the, the SDC charges. I think they're like 7,800 a piece. And so, you know, we we got already over what we had budgeted for this year. And we're expecting, you know, the construction to slow down a little bit. So that's not necessarily, that's a pretty rough estimate, I would say. We're going to try to get that nailed down a little better. And then the miscellaneous interest and dividends, and then that debt service expenditure, that's a, that's a flat amount. That's just coming right off our repayment schedule. And if you're looking back and you see that big 4 million in 2020, that was from the, the tribe sewer assessment. And paying that stuff off a couple of years ago, prior to my time. Not expected to have it again. And then finally, our storm water. So there's going to be a 20 cent increase next year. Obviously, that 20 cent increase isn't going to bring us up 40,000. But that, that estimate is based on what our current monthly billings are, you know, how much we send out every month. So I think that's going to get kicked up a little bit. And then not a whole lot of change in the operating side of things. And then for the capital, I believe that is just a vehicle purchase. And since these are enterprise funds, it does not come out of the vehicle and equipment fund. There's some interesting stuff going on between those two. But that is the end of things. And then on this last page, we've got a nice big summary where everything's all wrapped up into one. And so you'll see in this total that there's a $3 million surplus. That's not real. That, that is because we don't have the capital project expenditures in there. And so, you know, that was budgeted that 4 million this year. So right now, I would say we're going to be pretty close to, you know, 50 50, if it's going to be a surplus or deficit. We're going to get these numbers nailed down a little better. But I believe from at least our budget and our expectations, it shouldn't be drastically too far in one direction or the other. And that's what I got. Any questions, comments, suggestions for things you want to see in the next one? I'm going to get that better breakdown of the services for you guys on the next one. I hope to get the capital projects as well. And some better estimates for this construction revenue. And got a few other small things to flesh out here and there as well, but definitely open to suggestions.
What's the vehicle for public works needed for? What, what is that replacing? Or is it just an added vehicle to their department?
What was that? Maria, can you remember what vehicle that was?
They actually, there, Matt is purchasing two vehicles, a truck and then a bucket truck. And so these are additions. They're not, I don't know if they'll be retiring any or not.
Okay, thank you.
In this summary that's being displayed right now under revenues, which line incorporates the card room revenues?
That is going to be the general fund taxes.
In taxes, okay. Thank you.
And I did not go back and tick and tie everything, but in theory, you know, that should all tie back to our revenue numbers here on page one or on page three. Who knows if I actually got that far or not. Been a bit of a scramble these last couple of days getting this all put together.
Riley, Maria, when do you guys plan to have the next workshop for the budget?
The next workshop is on the, is October 27th, I believe. It's the last Wednesday of October, and I sent you a calendar invite for that.
Okay. And then that's when we'll get more of the, the details and final numbers at that point, right?
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
And by that time, we'll have our, you know, our Q3 financial analysis done as well. And so, you know, with that, we'll be able to better predict what our current year numbers are going to be. And that will kind of help us with budgeting for what we expect things to be next year as well.
I don't do allow a lot of compliments, but that'll really be a change. That, that's, that's nice to hear. In the years past, I've asked those same questions that there, when we'd finalize the budget in December and I, there wasn't a lot of answers of where we were actually at. So I look forward to that. That's great to hear. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Riley. Great job. And Maria, thank you. A lot of work to do though, still.
A lot of work to do still, that is for sure. Glad it's not December yet.
I think all, probably all of us on the council have got certain areas where we've got lots of questions still. And but I know you'll get them for us. Thank you.
Yep. And feel free to send me an email too, if, you know, you're staying up all night looking at this in further detail and something you just got to know. Just go ahead and reach out to me.
Okay, counsel. So if there aren't any other questions. We can go ahead and adjourn the work session and then we can reconvene here at 6:30 for the city council meeting. And Maria, should we just leave this open? Everybody can just basically turn off their mic and camera and we'll just leave it open until 6:30?
This conference will now be recorded.
Today is Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. I would like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
to the states of America
to the republic, for which it stands
one nation
yeah, justice for all.
Justice for all.
Could I have a roll call?
Councilmember Keeler?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Straven?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
I think you're muted, Liz.
Oh, I probably timed it poorly. I, I'm here.
And Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next is a consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Thank you. And next are presentations and proclamations. I do have two proclamations that I'll be reading this evening. The proclamation is Disability Employment Awareness Month. And we have Angela Gomez from the Clark County Development Disabilities Program with us this evening. Don't see her name on the screen here, but
She may be the caller.
Well, she's the caller. Okay, very good. And so she's in attendance and will accept the proclamation. And she would also like to speak for a few minutes after I read the proclamation. So first proclamation is Disability Employment Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 31st anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act. And together with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act established the right of adults and children with disabilities participate fully in all aspects of American society. And whereas the city of West Center supports the goals of equity opportunity, equity, opportunity, independent living and economic self sufficiency for people with disabilities. And whereas the US Department of Labor chose this year's theme for the 76th anniversary of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month as America's Recovered by Inclusion. And whereas the theme reflects the fact, including people with disabilities and contributions to the workplace is a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Now, therefore, the council hereby affirms the principles of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act by proclaiming October 2021 as Disabilities Employment Awareness Month in West Center. Washington in urged citizens to rededicate our community to fulfilling the letter and spirit of the laws and ask policymakers and business leaders to redouble their efforts to benefit from increasing opportunities for meaningful employment of people with disabilities for unemployment in all sectors of our economy and expand employment opportunities for youth with disabilities and renew our commitment to an inclusive workplace. Adopted this 22nd day of September, 2021 by the Center City Council. And counsel, if I get a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I have moved to approve the proclamation, mayor.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. So Angela, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's great to be here today with you guys. I'm Angela Gomez and I am a program coordinator for the Clark County Developmental Disabilities Program. So normally a board member attends, however, there was no board member available today to attend. So you have me today. So the developmental disabilities advisory board really helps to advise us and makes recommendations to the Clark County Council relating to developmental disabilities issues and the services we provide. So the board provides community leadership on improvement of efficiency as well as like effectiveness of community development, developmental disabilities programs. So we really thank you for your support of people with disabilities working in our community. And throughout the pandemic, really, people with disabilities have been counted among the most important essential workers. So also, we invite you to join us at a virtual event next month where we recognize people working, their employers, individuals and organizations that make it possible. And really, the yearly celebration is the National Disability Employment Awareness Month Awards. It takes place this month or next month on Wednesday, October 6th from 4:30 to 6:00. And you can email us or call us with additional information if you would like to attend. So I don't know if there's a chat in this function, but if there is, I'll go ahead and put an email and a phone number.
Thank you, Angela. And I did send that invitation out to all of the city council members.
Great. Okay. Thanks so much for the time tonight. Thanks so much for the time tonight.
Thank you, Angela. So the next proclamation I'll be reading this evening, counsel, is the National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month from September fifteenth, twenty twenty one to October fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Whereas National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its countless achievements. And whereas the observation began in nineteen sixty eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was acted into federal law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty eighteen, nineteen eighty eight, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas many Latino Americans trace their roots to the culture of the indigenous people of the American Americas, including the Arlax, the Aztecs, the Incas, the Maya, and the Tanyos. Some trace their roots to the Spanish explorers or to the Africans who were brought as slaves to the New World. And whereas September fifteenth through October fifteenth is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latinos contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse culture, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas this month's theme, Esponanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope, Hispanics and Latinos have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, politicians, military service members, educators, first responders, science pioneers, and public servants for our community. And whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities, while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans represent a significant demographic of the City of La Center, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city. And in and in witness whereof, I here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the Seero Center to be affixed this twenty second day of September twenty twenty one. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Greg Thornton, Mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty one as National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of La Center, encourage and encourage our community to join us celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans for our city, state, and nation. Counsel, could I get a motion to approve the proclamation for National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month?
So moved.
Go ahead, Liz. It's been moved and it's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation for National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening for the council?
We do not.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, what we're following here is that the public comments, Ron, are sent in prior to the city council meeting. And there's a deadline of four thirty of the day of the council meeting. So if you could just hold your public comment until the next meeting, and please send it ahead of the meeting, and we'll be read to the council. Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. Just have a couple of items. First of all, I just want to inform the the city council that maintenance one employee, Cory Short, has tendered his resignation from the city effective nine twenty four. He is relocating back to Wisconsin to be closer to his family. I just want to wish him the very best. I want to thank him for his service to the city. But yeah, Cory will be leaving, and and he's moving back to Wisconsin to be closer to his family. And then just one reminder that my next mayor's town hall will be Wednesday, October sixth, and it will begin at thirty P M. And it will also be a virtual meeting. So everyone can attend that meeting. Thank you. Next is the attorney's report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Things have been pretty quiet on the legal front. I do have a hearing coming up a week from Friday, so that'd be October first on the Riverside Estates Receiver Ship proceeding. And it's a status conference meeting. Right now, the status of that subdivision is that the receiver is entertaining offers from L G I Home Builders and Holt for the purchase of Phase Three of Riverside Estates. The offers are in the neighborhood of six point three million dollars, which would be enough to satisfy the outstanding loans of the Builders Capital, who financed much of the development of the subdivision, and about a half million dollars left for various lien holders. There has been activity out there in terms of completing the infrastructure and the public improvements for Phase Three, and some rough grading, I believe, for the Phase Four park. But other than that, I think that's the only legal matter that's currently pending. Happy to answer any questions and wish everybody a happy first day of fall, twenty twenty one.
Yeah. Thank you, Bronson. Any questions for the city attorney this evening, counsel? Okay, we'll move on. Next are council comments. Councilmember Keeler?
So our beautiful new middle school is fully operational, and they will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony on next Monday, the twenty seventh, at seven P M., and they will be providing tours. I can't wait to see the interior of that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, want to thank Public Works. I noticed they were crack ceiling out here. They did out on our street yesterday. I'm glad to see they're preparing for the upcoming winter deluge that we'll get. We have a great Public Works Department. We should be proud of them, and I don't see Matt on air, but I hope he finds out how much they're appreciated. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Straven?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens. Just a quick report. I attended my first C Tran board meeting here last week, and I'll just give you a couple of highlights. There's a new rapid transit center on Mill Plain being dedicated here, actually groundbreaking here on September the twenty sixth. And that's going to be very similar to the transit center that you see there at Vancouver Mall. It's going to be very similar to that, but that'll be on Mill Plain, and they're looking forward to that. Another program is called Micro Transit, and somebody, some of you may have heard that name, but a number of years ago, the City of La Center worked hard to get a commuter bus coming into La Center. It's called the Connector. And beginning of January twenty two, they're hoping to transform that process, that system of busing into a highly flexible and efficient system that will also provide on-demand opportunities. So you would be able to potentially call up or go online, and the bus, depending where it's at, could in fact come by your home and pick you up. They're looking at that as a more efficient way to operate. And so there'll be more information forthcoming on that, but that's called the Micro Transit System. The other thing that just finally here is, there's a lot of work being done here on the interstate bridge replacement, and C Tran has been asked to participate with their expertise. And so they've entered into an agreement with WashDOT to provide expertise in the area of alternative analysis, transportation planning, and transit planning slash engineering. So a lot of things going on there at C Tran, and look forward to keeping you posted on what what's happening there. And again, I want to also congratulate those at our city, particularly our planning department inspector, who played a big part in making sure that the middle school, the new middle school opened on time and on schedule. So again, shout out again to Matt Jenkins and his staff for helping make that all happen, and I'm hoping that I'd be able to attend that ribbon-cutting in next week, I think you said, didn't you, Justin? Thank you. That's that's me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. The only comment I have to add this evening that hasn't been mentioned is to pass the word and encourage neighbors, friends, and anyone that's traveling that with the time change coming up and dusk getting earlier, just to drive more cautiously and keep a good eye out for the children that are oftentimes wearing dark clothing and crossing our streets to get to school and sports events and sports activities early in the morning. So let's just take a moment to plan our own adult days better, start earlier, and travel more wisely, and be leaders to our children and show that we have their safety in mind.
Thank you.
Eric, could I cut back in here for a moment?
Absolutely.
I'd like to put a shout out to Chief Richardson and his staff. Last week, I was over in the Lockwood Creek area and was flagged down by a citizen due to a young man who was driving erratically in high speeds through their neighborhood. I shared that with the the chief that afternoon, and I talked to the individual neighbor who asked me to check into that for them, if possible. And just a shout out that Sergeant Scott actually went to the scene the next day, and also they are contacting this young man to let them know that, let him know that this is unacceptable in our city, and he was driving right by where children get on the bus, and it was just a hazard situation, a dangerous situation. Shout out to our police for taking care of that and jumping on it quickly. And if you pass it on, Chief, I'd appreciate that.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. The first one will be the finance staff report, and administrative services, Maria, Swinger, and Skip will be presenting. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and city council members. The August sales tax disbursement was ninety three thousand six hundred ninety one dollars. That is compared to fifty five thousand seventy one in twenty twenty. I attended the Washington Finance Officers Association Virtual Conference. It was a four-day conference where sessions attended included topics on property taxes, fraud, accounts payable automation, cash handling, and legislative updates, to name a few. And the November city council meetings will be held on November third and seventeenth due to the Veterans Day and Thanksgiving holidays. And the December city council meetings will be held on December first and fifteenth due to the Christmas holiday. Of course, if we need to add an additional meeting in December to approve the budget, we can, but we hope to approve it during one of those scheduled meetings. Mayor Thornton has earned the Core Certificate of Municipal Leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. A W C recognizes elected officials for accomplishing training in four core areas, which are roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements, public sector resource management, community planning and development, and effective local leadership. Mayor Thornton completed more than thirty hours of training credits to earn this distinction. So congratulations, Mayor, on receiving that. Next is the revenue for the card rooms. We did slightly this past month, but we are still on pace to surpass our budgeted amount for the year. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, our next staff report is the Community Development Staff Report, and Mr. Jeff Lawson will be presenting. Yeah?
Good evening, council, and good evening, La Center citizens. I just have a few items to go over this evening. First project I want to talk about is Heritage Center Building B. Updates on this one. The final site plan review was approved on August the twenty third. Some minor conditional use permit plans were submitted in July and approved August twenty third as well. The most recent development, which may cause a stir in the community, or you may hear about it, is the city is having to take code enforcement action, building enforcement action there at Building B because there's a tenant occupying a space, and the the owner of the building has not put in for final occupancy. And so the city's been working with the building owner on that, but I'm I don't believe we've seen sufficient progress on some building safety issues, and so the city is having to step up enforcement action there. So that could could become something you're aware of, and I'd rather you become aware of it from me than from just hearing it out and about. On the La Center Middle School, the temporary occupancy was issued on September first, and school begins September seventh. Next project is Highland Terrace. This is number nine, and this is a subdivision project, ninety-eight lot subdivision that was approved back in two thousand six and is now under construction. Miscellaneous utilities and streetlights have been installed on Phase One, and final construction of the stormwater pond is being completed. Phase Two rough grading is nearly completed, and sewer construction has begun. On project number ten, Holly Park subdivision, this project is complete except for the final building permits. All
Jeff, Jeff, real quick, that number nine, were they, were they putting a pump out there? Just remind me, it's been a while. I don't recall for the sewer system. Was there a pump going out in that area?
They're up, they're upland, and, you know, I'm getting a little out of school because I don't have P E hanging off my name like Tony does. I believe that they gravity down to the pump station that's in Riverside Estates.
Okay, that's all right. Yeah. All right, thank you.
So I think, yeah, I think Riverside, when they built, there's a manhole on Pacific Highway and Larson Drive, kind of in that vicinity, and I think the intent is for Highland Terrace to tie into that.
Okay.
So yeah, Holly Park subdivision is complete. All applications have been submitted. Just got to say that that one, that one was pretty fast and pretty smooth. You know, pretty impressed with the contractor and builder that did that one. It was, it went off without a hitch, and it was pretty straightforward subdivision. Went off without a hitch and was pretty straightforward subdivision. Um, next one is Riverside and uh Bronson gave brief update about the receivership issue. Um, grading has been started on the uh Phase Three site and the park, so that's the park is the Phase Four site. The Phase Three site is the multifamily. Um, the Phase Three apartment building permits uh have been approved and the grading and underground utilities permits have been approved. Uh, and retaining wall application has been uh submitted. And uh, yeah, so grading's currently underway on that one. And I think we'll probably see a lot of vertical construction going on uh next year, and we had anticipated that budget-wise, I think we'd anticipated. That Phase Three apartment complex to occur this year. Uh, and there were, you know, various delays related to the receivership process and other approvals that they needed to get. Uh, and so uh, that that project is pushing off into uh, into next year in terms of the building revenue the city will realize from it. On Stevens Hillside, this is number thirteen. This is an eighty-six lot subdivision that was approved in twenty eighteen. Um, the owner of the Stevens Hillside property contacted the city about revising the plat layout and going to construction next year, so uh they're they're. Reapproaching the city and and looking at revising their plans, and so. Uh, I think what's in play there is depending on the um. You know, substance of the proposed revisions to the subdivision plans uh that were approved in twenty eighteen. Uh, they may need to go through the plat approval process again. Versus just doing a post-decision review. Uh, if they're, you know, relatively minor changes, then a. Type-two post-decision review process is usually appropriate, but it sounds like they're talking about some more uh significant changes. Uh, so that will likely be a type-three process that'll go to hearings examiner. Uh, number eighteen is the City Hall project, and on this one, Swinton, who is the contractor, estimates that construction completion will occur in November. Uh, number nineteen is Apartmenteer Short Platte. And uh, so pre-application conference was held August eighteenth and the pre-app notes were issued on August twenty-seventh. And with that, I will take any questions from the council.
Jeff, on on number nineteen, is that the vacant, I'm sorry about the dog bark, uh, somebody just drove up. Is that the vacant property uh north of Tenth and east of Aspen?
I believe that that's correct. But I, just to uh, just to confirm, what I'll do is I'll pull up uh. Clark County G I S here and I'll look up the parcel. And clerk, if you want to. Allow me to share my screen. And hopefully y'all can see that. So the parcel is on the west side of Aspen. Along fifteenth.
Hey, I I'm looking, I was uh looking at the one that's, there's a large piece of a parcel uh. North of, north of Tenth, east of Aspen.
By the water tower?
No, uh, go down until your right, just a little bit. A big uh, there's a big parcel there. It's got, just got two houses on it. To, over against Aspen.
This.
There you go. That parcel.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any activity going on there that's, you know, been. Put through the city.
Okay, okay. It, it, there was a for-sale sign up there and apparently it sold, but just curious what, if anything was going on on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Any other questions?
Okay. Okay, Jeff, thank you very much. Um. Appreciate the report. Um, so no other questions for Mr. Swanson this evening, council? Very good. Well, if there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? That's the last item we have on our agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this evening's city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're joining us tonight. Always like to see new faces. Thank you.